We are ready to begin this afternoon's special board meeting. The time is 12:32. We would like to take this opportunity.
Thank you.
Take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes public comment, two board items under board recommendations, four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Morgan?
I'm, excuse me, I move we adopt the agendas printed.
Yes, Ms. Morgan. And Ms. Second. Seconded by Ms. Gettens.
Thank you.
Right agenda.
Please record your votes.
I'm not up yet.
Ms. Thomas, this.
I think I can sign in, so.
Erin.
Oh.
It just came up, ladies.
Oh, there it is. Okay, got it.
Okay. Ms. Patricia cannot sign in, so can you, Ms. Patricia, can you please? Yes?
Yeah, aye. Yes, please.
I'm not seeing mine either.
Okay, Ms. Gettens, will you?
Aye.
I'm in now, and I just said yes.
I'm in, and I just re-signed, but I'm not in, so I said yes.
Okay. Motion carries, six to zero. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. DePree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway. The rules concerning public comment are posted and will be made from the microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited in addition to clapping, hissing, and booing. Unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper during the public comment time is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow the proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. We will take recesses as necessary if there's not decorum in the chambers. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. I will call your name, and you may then approach the microphone. Madam Chair, there is one speaker.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and provide contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff. In addition, there, if there is not decorum during this meeting, I will call a five-minute recess. We will continue the recess as needed, increasing five minutes at each time. Members of the dais, when a recess is called, I ask that you leave the chamber. Of course, it goes without saying that during the recess, board members will not discuss any matters that is pending on the agenda or will come before this body to avoid sunshine violation. We would appreciate it if you would state your name prior to making your comment. Is there anyone in the audience that has not filled out a comment card? Is there anyone in the audience who has not filled out their comment card who would like to speak? Is there? So we have one. Mr. DePree Bruno, if you will go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I will call the following individuals, please. Armar Persons and Tara Jenner.
Hello, my name is Armar Persons, and I'd like to speak about the modification to the legislation agenda. I understand that it concerns the elected superintendent or keeping the appointed superintendent bill. This is very premature at this time to be taking a stance on that because it has nothing to do with either one as far as legislatively. It only provides for an election by the community to decide this issue. To go against this bill is simply to go against letting the community decide whether they should do it or not. We had an elected superintendent through 1974, and then we went to an appointed superintendent. The default is an elected superintendent in the state. So I tell you, the time to do this would be once it is passed the legislative, then you should go on record if you want to, whether you support it or you don't support it. But right now, you're actually going on record, one way or the other, for community input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara Jenner. I don't think it's premature at all. We always talk to our representatives well in advance of them pushing things and putting them onto the agenda and onto the ballot. My personal opinion is that this is a knee-jerk reaction, but it's a response to those of you on the dais now as those who were your predecessors and the selected superintendents over the years and some of the reactions and responses that we've had because of them sitting in the seat. Having said that, however, I do not think that an elected superintendent is an appropriate means by which to select somebody who fills that role and responsibility as is outlined because it then leaves us with somebody who's in that position that cannot be readily and easily removed, and it also removes the people from accountability and the ability to be able to coordinate with them and with the board. It also advocates your authority and your responsibility. Having said that, however, coming out with a letter from the board might actually be detrimental to you guys right now because it looks as if you're back doing a power grab. We want to keep our power, so please don't go ahead and do this. So maybe going ahead and speaking out individually on the pros and the cons would be the better way of doing it, doing informational seminars, because bluntly, the truth of the matter is it's an uninformed electorate that is the problem. If we had an informed electorate, we would have better board members, and as a result of that, we would have individuals who would be more adept at selecting superintendents, and we wouldn't have to spend an exorbitant amount of money paying for an outside firm to ostensibly do the job that you guys were hired to do in the first place. It goes back to credibility, it goes back to accountability, and transparency. And so when you guys sit up there on the dais and you do rubrics that you fill out on candidates for superintendent, and you hide behind numerical representations and don't tell us who and why you voted a particular way, that makes the public concerned because we don't know then who you are, and it goes more towards not who the superintendent is that you're selecting and why you're choosing them, but it goes towards our ability to vet you and your wisdom and your rationale and your thought process when it comes to making those decisions. If you were more transparent in those areas, maybe the public wouldn't be having this knee-jerk reaction. So I just offer that for what it's worth, and I also offer my services for what you may choose and benefit from it to help educate the public in any way that I possibly can so that they can become more informed both on the issue of the elected superintendent proposition as well as school board candidates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please public comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming. Really appreciate your comments for both sides, and so just, we absolutely do hear what you're saying, so thank you for that. We now have the approval to enter into a contract negotiations with a candidate for superintendent position. How, Ms. DePree Bruno? We had consensus at the last one, but we did not vote on a person.
You didn't actually take a consensus, you did the matrix.
Did a matrix.
And then the matrix had your top two. So, Mr. Caldwell, do you want to facilitate this, or do you want me to help them?
Please go ahead.
So really, what you're going to do now is perhaps through a roll-call vote, and just like you would, my recommendation would be just like you would if you're, when you're voting for your own board chair, it's just you do a roll-call vote and see where you land. If whoever has the majority, that's the person that would be provided with the offer. Is that okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, but I would like to also see how do we get, because the consensus, we had five to, five to two, and I would like to see how we can get a full consensus of seven, and what would that look like in conversation?
I have a question.
Ms.
Would it be cleaner if I just started with a motion? And then we, okay.
There is a motion, I mean, that, I think, Ms., what is indicated on the board docs doesn't have a name.
Correct.
So if you want to, just go ahead and do the motion with the name.
Okay, so I move that we approve the entry into contract negotiations with Dr. Christopher Bernier for the superintendent position as discussed earlier today and as determined by the matrix provided by our search firm.
Thank you. Do I have a?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
It's a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Totally. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah.
So I do want to say that I thought that both candidates were well-qualified and spoke pretty much to the same practices in terms of superintendent responsibilities. I have said from the get-go that my concern has been that we appoint and retain, we appoint a superintendent who will appoint and retain high-quality leadership, a superintendent who will ensure that our plan has fidelity by making those responsible for action plans accountable. I am, I want to focus on early childhood, I want to focus on CTE. Those things both require engagement with the community, nonprofit, political, whatever. And so frankly, the reason that I came down in favor of Dr. Berner is that I felt he was the more seasoned candidate. I just had more confidence that he would be ready to come in and had the experience and skill set necessary to hit the ground running. So those are my comments.
Ms. Gettens?
Well, several of my colleagues have mentioned that each time they met with the candidates or was in, were in their presence, that they learned something different about them. I had very specific questions when I met with them one-on-one. I had specific questions when I met with them in public. And based on the specific answers, I mentioned earlier this morning that we basically have a referendum against us, that from the point of July 1st, when we appoint a new superintendent or anything between now and November, we are proving the fact that we can do what's best for children, that we can move things along, and that we can, as a governance team, run this district. And it's a short period of time, like I said before. And as much as I may have wanted one candidate over the other, we have to have someone that has the points in place, that have done the things that would fit our district in a short period of time to make a difference. So that is why I selected Dr. Bernier and many, many of the people on my search committee all went with him, and also many other comments that I got from the community. There were many as well for Dr. Ramirez, and especially based on the fact that he would have been, would be the first Hispanic person in our community. But when you weigh out everything, the time, the job, the yeoman's weight that will be on their back for a short period of time, I just felt that we, and was agreed with the community, that we need somebody that can come in quickly and hit the ground running. And like I said, I wish we could have both. Maybe one could be deputy for a while or something, but that's the rationale behind it.
Any other comments? Ms. Givinelli?
So, as much as, I'm having a really hard time because I really feel like that we should be waiting. But I don't think this board wants to wait. But I really think we should be waiting at least till, to see what happens with the pending legis, legislation and what happens in Tallahassee to determine if that point, I mean, once we got past that hurdle, I would be, I would be more confident in making a decision today. So I may reserve and not vote today, or vote no today, just on the candidate in general because I think that, I think we should be listening to the community and we should be waiting until we see what happens in Tallahassee, and at that point, then determine and hire a superintendent at that point in time, once we get past that hurdle. Thank you.
Any other comments? And I would just say that we had two great candidates. They both had different perspectives, but there was a lot of similarities, but then there was a lot of difference as far as the person themselves. And, you know, is it heart that you want, or is it somebody? It was tough. It was really tough. And, but I do feel that they both were aware of the situation at hand, they're prepared to take on whatever we decide, and so I feel that we definitely need to move forward. We cannot, at this point, they've gone through the process, we've gone through the process with them, they know what would be expected or what may come down, but then again, it's like, would it should have, you know, it may, may not. So I think that we have to be diligent and do what we have to do. Ms. Patricia?
So I would say that the rubric or the matrix that we used almost perfectly mirrors the feedback that I've gotten from the community in terms of, you know, the number of people who, were they sitting in my seat, would choose Dr. B. I'm never going to say his name correctly, so I'm just going to call him that. And this entire process has been amazing to me in the sense that this board has been so on the same page as the community. I mean, we have in front of us two candidates that are good, two candidates that can do the job, and for us to be in this position is an absolutely beautiful position to be in. That being said, you know, the feedback that I got is that there is a large difference between the two in terms of ability to step into the role tomorrow and do the job without much mentoring or much learning on the job, so to speak. And I really believe that that's what we need, and for me, it comes down to budget expertise, given some of the difficulties we're facing in finance right now, and we never know what's coming out of Tallahassee in terms of budget cuts or, you know, 38-cent increase in student funding or something. The way that Dr. Bernier went through the budget process annually, he went through the entire process for the entire year, was very impressive to me. So regardless of which way the board was going to go on this, I was going to support either candidate because, again, I believe they're both qualified, but based on the community feedback that I've received, this, this is kind of a no-brainer. So, and again, I have nothing bad to say about either candidate, not one bad thing to say about either candidate. And I do wish Mr. Ramirez the best of luck in the future, and I appreciate his participation in this process.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so I too appreciated the process and the input from the community. I mean, it was a lot compared to my past experience. At this point, I am ready to work with Dr. Bernier and move forward, so, and I wish Mr. Ramirez the very best in the future.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. I agree with much of what was said already. Definitely, I went back and forth a little bit in the beginning, but as was said, you learn more the more you talk with them, watch, observe in a social situation, one-on-one, and even then, it was, it was really very close for me. I knew that Dr. Bernier had the edge in just my own view, but then the writing, the results of the writing, he came out ahead, the results that we got this morning on the experience-based interviews, he came out ahead, and reading the comments from constituents. I have to say that Mr. Ramirez had a lot of positive comments, but the comments for Mr. Bernier, or Dr. B outweighed that, and so with my own feelings, plus the constituents, plus the staff members, plus the people that I, that served on the committee, the special committee we had with the, with the parents and community members, I heard from some of them individually, actually, most of them individually, as well as, you know, seeing how the results turned out, and they weighed in terms of Dr. B, so I really, really liked Mr. Ramirez. I do wish him the best, best of luck, and the only, the only thing I could say is I wish Dr. B spoke Spanish. I mean, but, but, you know, we, this, this is a hurdle that we still need to look at, and he's used to working with diverse districts, and so I'm looking forward as we have the transition period that perhaps he will be. And so I'm looking forward as we have the transition period, that perhaps he will be able to add some Hispanic, Hispanic administrators to his team, and that moving forward, we, we get caught up with that, because that's, that's one area in administration. We've made headway with African-American, Black, but the Hispanic community in terms of high-level administrators, principals, and other key figures, we, we really need to do a little catch-up in, in that department. So I think he will make good choices, and I look forward to working with him.
Thank you. So if, if I may, Ms. Patrica, could you please restate? Oh, I just, I'm sorry, I thought I had, can I, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I just, based on, on some of the things that I've heard too, I know many people in the community were, what can I say, pulling for Mr. Ramirez because of the diversity. And like I said, it was very close for me, however, in speaking with Dr. B about that very subject, and listening to his examples of working in areas that were majority-minority districts previously, and some of the programs that he did institute in those areas, I felt that he, and, and so did others, that he was very keenly aware of our needs and how to quickly move to make differences in those particular areas, because he does have that expertise. So I just wanted to, to say that, that he's, you know, worked in majority-minority districts, and very well-versed and trained in implicit and explicit bias and all of those types of things, and certain things just outweighed. But I did want to put that on record, that yes, we were aware of that desire from certain members of the community, and I believe that you will see in, in his work going forward, that he is keenly aware of that as well.
Thank you for mentioning that, because you are correct. He, he definitely is, for sure. So Ms. Patrica, if I may, could you please restate your motion?
So I move that we approve the entry into contract negotiations with Dr. Christopher Bernier, as approved by the board in earlier discussions and through the matrix earlier today.
Thank you. So if I may, if you could, please go ahead and record your vote.
I don't have it unless I need to refresh.
You want it?
Yeah, no, it just took me out again. It just popped up.
I'm sorry, six, one, motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Bernier.
Can we clap for him? Because I'm.
Can I ask a question, Madam Chair? Is there a way to contact him and see if he's still in town?
That's already, that's happening.
Oh. He's not here, they're contacting.
Yeah. Dr. Colwell is calling them. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, so we've done that. Approval of modification to the legislative priorities. Is there a motion to approve?
May I?
Yes.
I move that we approve a modification to the Lee County School District's legislative platform for the 2022 session to include a statement that the Lee County School Board is in favor of maintaining the appointed superintendent position in our county.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Moved by Ms. Patrica, seconded by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? I know we've had discussion about this prior, but is there any more discussion? Ms. Gittens?
I just want to be clear on what this vote is, is about. Is this the letter that Ms. Patrica did that you are going to revise and send out to everyone?
Now, that vote is Tuesday night.
So I, I would like to be clear specifically on what this vote is for.
Okay, so this vote is specifically to amend our legislative platform for the 2022 session to include the fact that the Lee County School Board is in favor of maintaining the appointed superintendent position in our county.
And is that the verbiage? And is that all that there will be? Will there be a letter as well? We discussed a lot of things, and I just want to make sure what point we're talking about.
We reached consensus earlier today to direct the chair to write a letter. She will get that letter to us by Friday, and that issue will come before the board for a vote on Tuesday. This is simply a change to our legislative platform for the 2022 legislative session.
And the verbiage will be what you earlier read, correct?
That is exactly what a motion is, yes.
That's, no, that's, I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens and Ms. Ms. Patrica, that's, yes, that's what it will be, is just strictly for that. And then anything further? It's just allowing us to let the legislators know, because they said that they have not heard from us. This has given us, given the opportunity that they will hear from us on how we feel, because it has been stated that they did not, they have not heard from us.
But my point is, it will include a letter that we have not yet seen.
No, it will not include a letter. The letter will be, the letter's going to, we discussed this, we're, the letter's to be drafted by Friday, then it's going to come to you all, and then that conversation will happen again. It has nothing to do with the letter.
So my discussion is that a, a majority vote on this today, and several of you are going to Tallahassee, I would like to know then, what is the discussion that you will have with the legislators? Will you be going over the information we already received, as you are saying to them, this is what we feel, and how, how will that occur?
It is just changing it to add that on there.
And it will be discussed.
Not the, not the data, not, not a letter, not any of that.
But my point is that you will be going before legislators within the next couple of days and discussing this. And that's what, I don't know what that discussion is, because we will not have the letter until Friday, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not trying to be difficult, I just want to know what I'm voting for.
May I? Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. G.
It's just adding it to the platform of the list, like putting it on the, like, like a parking lot list, but it's the platform list. It's adding it to that, that we oppose it. I mean, I, I'm going to, I'm going to be honest, I'm not going to vote for that today. But that's my, that's my preference. That doesn't mean it's not, it's, it was already consensus, it's going to pass, but, and then, and they can, they're going to talk about it in Tallahassee, and it is what it is. That's what, that's the will of the board, but I mean, it's just, it's getting on the list. Then to follow will be the letter.
So. If I'm in front of a legislator and they ask me a question about this, I will say the board has taken the position in favor of the, not, I'm not opposing anything that the legislature is, is presenting. I am in favor of maintaining the appointed position. The board is working on a letter that we will be sending to all of our legislators. From a personal perspective, these are the reasons why I oppose it, but please stay tuned for official correspondence from the board. That, that would be, if you're, you're asking what that conversation would look like, from my perspective, that's what that conversation looks like.
And, and if I may also add, that would be when we drop off, because currently we do have meetings set up with Ms. Jenna Pearson Malachi, so she definitely will be meeting with us. Mr. Botana will be meeting with us. All the other ones are tied up at this moment, so they're still trying to schedule times for us, but we, however, will be going by their office and dropping off literature, so, which would have our legislative priorities on that, and this would just be added to that in that manner, period.
In a conversation that I had with Carol Green, our.
Legislative.
Thank you, legislative lobbyist, she was in favor of the board taking a position before we go to Tallahassee. She thought that that was a good move by the board, because I know that publicly several legislators have stated, we don't know what the school board thinks about this. So it's really incumbent upon us, again, to be flexible, be able to respond quickly during legislative session, and this is us doing exactly that.
And they want to, yes, thank you. They want to hear from us, and this is just allowing them to, to hear from us and have that. Ms. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yeah, and, and plus, just having that mere statement there on our legislative platform, we have capital strategies working for us in Tallahassee, and it will enable them, right from the get-go, to say, well, Lee County School Board has taken a stand, that they will, they want to retain the appointed superintendent. So it'll also serve the purposes of having that on the list, and should they come into contact before we draft a letter or any of those other things we talked about, that they can minimally say, this is how the school board feels.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, my point in, if I were to vote yes for this, would be yes, that it would go, that statement as read would go on our agenda. Where I am uncomfortable is the explanation of, other than what Ms. Vaughn just said, that this is the stance of the board, and you will get further information. I am very concerned, depending on the situation, if board members then present more information about that. I knew I turned this off six times. Geez, sorry. I just, that's what I just want to make sure of, that what I am saying is yes, put this on there, that we don't agree of having a, an elected superintendent, but, but that's all. I, I just, we haven't worked out all the details of what that looks like, what the verbiage looks like, what the script looks like, and having you guys go up and represent that, I, I'm just a little concerned.
And Ms. Gittens, I, I hear you, and we've had this conversation earlier for quite some time, and, and that was the whole conversation, was that we were not doing that, that we were going to bring it back here, we were going to take the time, put everything together, and do it correctly, so that way we have all the facts, so when we are out there or whatever we decide to do, that we would have it. This is just stating that we are, are against the elected official.
Well, Ms. Patrica.
Or we are for, we are for the appointed.
Okay, and Ms. Patrica did mention in her comments, though, that in the discussion to the legislators, that she would give her, excuse me, I'm sorry if I'm boring anyone, but that she would give her personal opinion.
Okay.
And that's the part that bothers me.
I mean, if I run in.
Wait, Ms. Patrica?
Please.
Just a second. If, if, if Ms. Patrica or any of us, that is our prerogative and our privilege as, as just human beings to, to speak on whatever. We can do that without being a part of the board. So they have that individual right to do that.
Understand that.
And then I'm going to ask Ms., I'm going to ask Ms. Vaughn, because Ms. Vaughn had her hand up, and then Ms. Patrica.
I just, I just sighed. That's all, I'm sorry. I sighed.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Couldn't help it.
Nothing to say.
And if it makes everybody feel better, I'm not going up there, and so that means that it makes it easier, because I'm not going to lose my cool with somebody and get arrested as an insurrectionist. So, and I, I, because I know you're a little more moderate than, than I am, that my fellow board members that talk about this won't say what I would have said.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
I do think I'd like to be a fly on the wall for that arrest.
Ms. Patrica, did you have, you have something to say?
Yes, I, I will not speak on behalf of the board, I will speak as an individual. If I run into Representative Roach in the hallway, I'd like, I, I don't want to have the authority to do that. I, as an individual, have the authority to do that. I combed through spreadsheet after spreadsheet after spreadsheet, counted districts and highlighted districts in these spreadsheet. I mean, I put a lot of work into this, and, and I feel like I, I know the facts pretty cold, and, and I will, as an individual, Chris Patrica, who happens to sit on the Lee County School Board, share my beliefs on the issue. But in terms of the legislative platform, the board has taken the position to support the appointed superintendent position. In terms of me, Chris, as an individual, I'll talk it through with them.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens, did you have something else?
I, I have no qualms about anybody as an individual speaking about what they believe. I, I just am saying that if I am voting on something, I want it to be just clear and clean, that this is what the board has said, and then any other comments after that are your personal comments, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, and I, I think we all have heard that, I think the public has heard that. I believe that, I, I think it is definitely crystal clear where, where we're at on this. So in saying that, is there any other comments or questions? Saying none, I will ask you to please record your vote. Five, two, motion carries. And there's no way that we can change your votes, huh? Okay.
Too late.
Too late. So moving on to the next business?
Well, you asked the question.
I know, but it was too late, that was me just thinking out loud. Ms. Gia Venelli, do you have anything?
I don't.
Don't, okay. Okay, I have.
Wait, I do have one thing.
Too late.
Real quick. So I, on Saturday, I attended my first Derby car race at Edison Park, and I meant to get pictures. My granddaughter came in second, there was only four cars, but she came in second, and it's the first time that she was able, she was ever, you know, has ever done it, so she was very excited. It was a themed, animal-themed, so her, her car was a duck, and even with the feathers on it, it still came in second, so I was, I was surprised. So I just wanted to say that, if anyone could ever get to a Derby car race, and I don't know if other schools do it, it's quite exciting. I guess any race is technically, so it was, so yes. But anyways, my granddaughter was very ecstatic that she came in second, and second, by the way, is best place, so just, just saying. She said that.
Did she have tacos to fuel her along the way?
She didn't get that, get it that day, but don't worry, my, my grandson was busy eating all the donuts, and my, my, and all, there was all kinds of stuff to eat there. He had, I think, three donuts, and my husband had to put five bucks in to pay for the donut, so.
Well, thank you for that, and when you get those pictures, please share them, because I, I missed that, I was going.
I do have pictures, so I'll send it to them, and.
That would be great, we'd love to see that. And, and that will also show the good things that are happening in our schools.
Oh, yeah, it was really cute.
So please, please do that. Appreciate that. Ms. Fisher?
I have, I have nothing at all this afternoon, thank you.
Yeah, so I forgot to mention during my board member comments last time.
Yeah, so I forgot to mention during my board member comments last time, I was at a wrestling match at Benita Springs High School, and the coach struggled to get the National Anthem to play. He had like a portable thing that he uses as a P.A. system to play, so the kids can stand and, you know, whatever. He, he was having a hard time getting it. He fiddled with it for several minutes, and when it was clear it wasn't gonna work, one of the students started to sing the National Anthem.
There you go.
And every student in that room, both teams, and every adult in the, in the stands, myself included, I ruined it for everybody by singing, but we all sang the National Anthem. It was one of those hair stand-up-on-your-arms kind of moments, and so I know that there's a lot of rhetoric out there about education and indoctrination, and to have two teams in Lee County spontaneously sing the National Anthem and know every word of it, to me is a sign that we're doing something right. So I wanted to share that with you. I actually sent the video to Dr. Savage, because it, like I said, it was one of those hair stand-up moments, and I, I wanted him to share it, share in that excitement. Regarding Sunday's events, and Ms. Vaughn, I'm not arguing with you on this. I really just want to make it clear from the foundation's perspective. It's my understanding, I'm very grateful for what the foundation did, and I don't want any of the comments made at this table to sort of denigrate that or take away from that. It's my understanding, and the chair can correct me if I'm wrong, Marshall was responsible for inviting foundation board members past and present, and I felt like there was a great presence there. Before that, however, you had come up with a sort of sample list with H.R. that was sent to us for our, either addition or deletion or any of that, for our input. That input was sent to Dr. Carlin, and from there, a final list was determined. Is that, is that not accurate?
No, that's not. So the list, first of all, the, the foundation was the host. They hosted the event, and we really, really appreciate it. So of course, the foundation members are gonna be there. We had given that assignment to Dr. Carlin. She helped create the first list, we, collective, and then we sent it out so that everybody else could have their feedback in. We extended that to get more feedback in. And then, once that happened, then that was given to the foundation, and they sent out the invites.
Right, okay. I just, so like, really, the only people on that invite list that were the responsibility of the foundation were the board members, past and present.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that-
Nope, that's correct.
A little bit more clear.
Yep.
I do have two questions for the board. The first is, when do we want Dr. B. to start? And the reason why I ask the question is because I know July 1st has been mentioned quite often. I don't know what Dr. Bernier's schedule is or what his availability is, but I do have some concerns about, I, I mean, we're good through the end of the school year. All the plans are already in place. The, the planning for next school year is taking place right now in this school district, and I would, rather than have Dr. Bernier sort of be stuck with whatever plans take place right now and have to implement them next year, I'd like to see him have a larger voice in this planning process right now. So I, I don't know if we, as a board, want to indicate to H.R. and the board attorney and the, the chair that the sooner he can start, the better. I don't see it as disloyal to leave a district halfway through the school year, because again, a lot of the plans are already in place, and, and it's a matter of gathering the data at the end of each quarter and adjusting based on that, and, and much of that takes place in academic services. So I'd like to get a feel for the appetite from the board to direct a sooner start date rather than later, assuming that that is something that Dr. Bernier is amenable to.
And Ms. G, you had?
So, yeah, so I would agree, but if he's unable to start sooner, would it be appropriate for him to be involved in some of the things that are ongoings right now? And do we, how do we, should we give directive to the superintendent to work with the new superintendent? So I'd like to see that conversation as well, because we don't know that he can start. I mean, I know it's a little, he has some time to plan accordingly, you know, so that's good, but I guess talking to him will be that.
Yeah, and, and based on conversations with both of them, they were gonna have the ability to do that, and that's something that we'll have to ask the attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
We are-
I will come back. I know you're not finished.
We've talked during this whole process about the process and the timeline and the plan with Ray and Associates, and the timeline was to start July 1st with two to three months prior to that overlapping with the current superintendent. And that was my understanding when I looked at it and read it, and that's what we were told, that there would be an overlap time. And so I would, you know, we've said we want to follow the process. I think we should follow the process. And then during that time of overlap, that, yes, definitely, you would be involved in whatever's going on.
Well, I, I think that, that was on the assumption that it was a sitting superintendent, and then happened to be pulled out of, out of a district. And I think with the negotiations, that's what our attorney will, and their attorneys, we will be discussing all of that. Mr. DePree Bruno?
I just need some guidance from the board on a couple of things. One, I need a consensus as to timeline. Do you, are you looking at July 1, or if possible, he can start earlier? You want him to start sooner rather than later? I need some type of general direction from the board, please.
Thank you. Ms. Patrico, could you mention that?
And that, yeah, that was exactly why I brought it up, because if we are, if we find ourselves in a position with Dr. Bernier where he is able to start sooner than July 1, I'd like to give you the authority to negotiate that. That was why I brought it up, not, not for anything other than, I'm not saying accelerate the timeline. I'm not saying do something other than what we have contemplated all along, but as Ms. Jordan said, I think we all contemplated hiring a sitting superintendent as opposed to chief of staff. That's a different ballgame. We're in a different ballgame here. So if there's flexibility on his end, I'd like to give board attorney the authority to negotiate an earlier start date.
And then Ms. G-
Consensus, please, from the board.
Yeah, I'm gonna, Ms. G has her, Ms. Giavinelli?
Well, now I forgot what I was gonna say again. Um, no, well, starting sooner, definitely a possibility, but, oh, reminder, that's what it is, calendar. July is our, kind of our off month, so that's just a reminder, people got vacations planned and so forth, so sooner would be better. Sorry, that's what I had to say. I remembered.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, and I, I would like to hear Mr. DePree Bruno weigh in on transition periods, because I, I think if we can have, you know, Dr. Savage here, and, and the other important thing is, aren't contracts due by the end of June? And that is, that's huge-
Yeah.
For the incoming superintendent. Now, a lot of it depends on when he can, when he can get here, to get to know the people, to weigh in on any possibilities of changing some of the organizational structure. And I, and I, and I really feel that he would need to, you know, not only, as he said in his interviews, talk with all the individuals, with H.R., with the individuals, with Dr. Savage, but obviously, most superintendents, when they come in, they bring at least a couple of their own staff members, a trusted administrative assistant. I think that's, that's been pretty much par for the course on a couple changes in, in that matter as, as well. So could we have Mrs. DePree Bruno weigh in on-
So-
How that might look, a transition period where we have the outgoing and the incoming, maybe even employed at the same time, or how does that work?
So that's something that I will work with both Dr. Savage and Dr. Bernier with regards to that. There's also the transition of Dr. Savage from this position. You know, his contract does allow him to continue on in another position.
Right.
So that needs to be resolved as well. So I, the, the most important thing for me to know is if I have a consensus from the board to go, to be able to negotiate in terms of not being stuck with July 1, if I can get an earlier date. That's the first thing I need. And then from there, I will be able to talk to both of these individuals and come up with a transition plan.
So can I have consensus?
What?
Consensus for Mr. DePree Bruno to move forward to work before July 1?
As soon as possible.
Yeah.
Then the next consensus, do I have the board's direction to move forward to work with both Dr. Bernier as well as Dr. Savage in terms of a transition plan?
Yes, as long as, we are kept involved in all that.
Absolutely.
In the loop.
And then, does the board want one designee, if there's a quick question for somebody, or does the board want me to come back to the entire board to have discussions? The entire board is what I'm getting the sense of. Just give me a quick consensus that it goes back to the entire board. Okay, all right. Dr. Bernier is on his way, so I will meet him, and then bring him to meet the board once this, this meeting is over, and we will begin this process. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not done.
No, I know.
Wait.
I'm going back.
On his way here now?
He's, he, they were both here in Fort Myers still.
Oh, okay.
So, so prior, hopefully before this meeting is even over, he'll be able to swing by.
Okay. And the final thing I want to say is, with very few exceptions, each step of this process has made me proud to be a part of this governance team. I think that we really came together. I think that, you know, there were hiccups here and there, and there were bumps in the road here and there, but those bumps in the road were smoothed out by the professionalism of staff and the way staff managed this process for us. Their interactions with the search firm, their interactions with the candidates, I just, I'm finding myself in a position where, three months ago, I never thought I'd find myself, which is, I am proud to be a member of the Lee County School Board. So thank you to my colleagues for making this process as, as fun as it was. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrico. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. On Saturday night, I was able to attend an event for Mr. Joe North, and it was his 30th anniversary of being in business as an attorney. The reason I mention it is because he is a very staunch contributor and part of the community down by our high school, the stadium, and pretty much anything that our students need, and he is available and able to do. And I just think that he should get mentioned for all that he does for Lee County schools, and congratulations on his 30 years. The other thing is, if your chair was turned around a little bit slightly last night, or there's a deeper dent in the, in the gavel, it's because there were seven Girl Scouts here, 10 and 11, one was 11, the rest were 10, from Troop 267, and they became you guys last night. So they were working on their, their government badge. So we, they were in the, I brought them in, they went in the back, and we, I showed them a, a video of one of our meetings to see what it looks like. And then, thank you to Ms. Schaefer, she printed out some agendas for us, and they had to write while we were in there who was going to do what, and who was gonna, everybody wanted to be Ms. Jordan.
They did. They wanted to be me.
Only because they wanted your gavel.
Oh, okay.
Just, just to get it straight.
No, I'm pushing.
So then when we came out, and while we were back there, Dr. B. came back, and Ms. Patrico and Attorney Bruno, so they got to meet them all, and they were so excited about meeting Dr. B. And I showed them videos of both candidates. So when they came out, the one thing they had to vote on was a candidate for superintendent, and they had to talk about, you know, make the motion and discussion and all. It was, it was really cute. And there's a lot of pictures I'll share with you. And now I can say, since it's all over, Dr. B. won as well with Troop 267, so I'm sure that's a claim to fame for him. But they really enjoyed it. You should be receiving letters or notes from each of them, because I asked them to send whoever's chair they sat in, they have to send you a, a letter or an email stating what they learned and something nice to you for sitting in their chair. So if you ever get a chance, man, being in a room with seven, 10, 11-year-olds was a treat. It was fun. So I just wanted to share that. I think that, I think that was it for right now, and if anything else, I'll do it next week.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And that's pretty much the story of my life. I always have that amount of kids with me. However, I, I think it's because I also gave them cookies.
Oh, they, and I have to say this. So you got these little girls, and they're already like, "Mm." Ms. Patrico gave them candy. And then after that, she says, "Here, take another piece." And then she went out the back door.
The other thing, so we were talking about the one 11-year-old. I looked her straight in the eye, and I said, "Let me guess, you're 11 years old." She was like, "How do you know that?" And I said, "I have Jedi mind control." And then we were talking about our dogs, and I told her I'd show her a picture of my dog, and as I was going through my phone, a picture of my son showed up. So I showed her the picture of my son, and he's like, and then I was like, "Oh, that's not my dog," whatever. It was, she was, it was really, every time I'm around the kids, it's food for the soul, and we need, we need to do more of it.
They were delightful.
It was a delightful treat to walk back there and see.
It really was. They had a blast.
So let me understand, Ms. Jordan gave a Girl Scout cookies?
I did.
Yes, she did. And she gave them candy, but I walked away with-
They didn't give me cookies. I gave them cookies.
And I walked away with four boxes of Girl Scout cookies, so.
It just felt right.
Just to say.
Ms. Vaughn?
Well, my only comment is, obviously, those ladies didn't have to take those kids home and put them to bed, so.
Give them more candy.
I, I don't have any additional comments. I-
Thank you.
Said a lot today.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I would just like to echo some things that have been said. It, it was not an easy process, but I think it was a really good process. I think we learned a lot. I think we grew a lot going through the process. And I do also want to thank staff. I mean, towards the end, when things were getting sort of-
Squirrely.
Squirrely is the word. Thank you, yes. You really, you brought order and discipline and focus, and, you know, it just, it really, really helped, and you heard Dr. Caldwell say how well perceived we were as a community, and that's due to your work and the work of the foundation. So we are just enormously pleased with the whole district sort of coming together on this inside and outside, and just thanks to all.
Thank you. And, yeah, I, they kept me grounded, too. So Suzette and Mr. Dodick, I thank you, thank you, thank you. My team in the office, Ms. Thomas and Ms. Lizette, just, yeah, every second when I was getting ready to pull my hair out, you were there, so I so appreciate it. And I appreciate each and every one of you working, you know, together to make this process go through, and Marshall and the foundation, of course. And also H.R., who was out there, you know, running everybody around yesterday. I really appreciate them. I know, we don't want to forget anybody, so we thank everybody. Also, I have a letter that was drafted to go out to the districts after the vote, so I will go ahead and forward it to you. I just want to make sure-
To schools?
It's going to the, the school district, it's for the school district of Lee County employees, so we have one that's going out, and I could just do it real quick. It's just that we're excited to share with you the selected Dr. Christopher Bernier as the next superintendent of the school district of Lee County, and then who he is as chief of staff of Nevada, what he's done, that Dr. Bernier embodies all the characteristics that you said were important to you as we embark upon this national search, including, and then everything that we had asked for them. And then also, there is, on here, it just says that, you know, "We would be remiss if we did not thank Dr. Savage for his leadership through what has been an incredible, challenging year. His willingness to serve on behalf of the children of Lee County is something for which we are-" we are and will always be incredibly grateful." Thank you so much for participating in this process and for helping us select the best candidate to lead the school district of Lee County. We look forward to introducing you to Dr. Bernier and continuing together our mission to ensure that each student achieves his or her personal potential, so highest personal potential. So I'm asking you that we all put our signatures on this, if that is okay, or, I don't want to send it out from me.
I have a question on it. The one, the one part, and I'm better if I can see.
I can send this to you.
See it, but you don't have to send it immediately. It almost sounded to me like when you were thanking Dr. Savage, that it sounded like he was exiting and, Dr., could you just go back over that?
Oh, yeah.
And see if it was just my hearing, or?
It just said, we would be, we would.
But wait a minute, what, we've elected, back it up a little?
Yeah, so it tells us that with great excitement, we share that we have selected.
Right.
Dr. Christopher Bernier as the next superintendent of the school district of Lee County, and then Dr. Bernier is currently the chief of staff, telling the information of where he came from. Dr. Bernier embodies all of the characteristics that you said were important to you when we embarked upon this national search, including, and then having student-centered philosophy, experience in recruiting and retaining exceptional staff, being willing to listen, processing, possessing the leadership skills, knowledge, sensitivity required to respond to opportunities. And then the next step is, the next step is to begin contract negotiation and determine a start date for Dr. Bernier. And the.
Okay.
Meantime, we wanted to share the following message from him, and then we're going to get a message, like a little quote from him welcoming.
Right, right.
Or whatever. And then after that, it's like, we would be remiss if, if we did not thank Dr. Savage for his leadership through what has been an incredible, challenging year. It's thanking him for his leadership for taking on that responsibility.
Right, right, right. But does that, okay, it just struck me, it almost sounded like he was done, because we have a new.
Done in that position.
Yeah, but it's not.
He's not yet.
It's not clear from.
Okay.
It's not clear from that sentence, if we could add.
There's, there's something missing there.
As we progress in this process.
That he will.
Yeah.
It needs to be clear that there will be a transition, because.
Thank you, transitioning.
Did the rest of you hear that, that it sounded like?
There's a transition, and he's.
New guy.
Still us.
If Dr. Savage is done.
He's still LCSD.
Yes.
Exactly. He's still the.
Both of those.
That's a problem, right, right in that one section.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm sending it, so please look at them and whatever.
Let's not wordsmith here. You can.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I sent, I sent it to you, though, so you have it. Please.
Okay, so we, we agree that it sounds like, makes it sound like, so that needs to be changed.
So I've sent it to you, so if you will please look at it, and whatever you believe, if you will go ahead and put that together and then send it, any corrections?
Who wrote it to begin with?
To Ms. Stillwell, if you'll send it to her, please, in communications.
All right.
Okay, so if you will send it to communications, please. And then, my, so my question would be, once that is clear, then we would all have, I would hope that we would all have our signatures on that going out to them. So that's what I would like, the consensus.
It's just that one little piece there.
Yeah. So do I have consensus that everybody would have their signature on that?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Thank you. Ms. Fisher? Same? You would definitely, okay, thank you. Okay, and that is, I think we're coming to the end, because that's the only one that I had. So I have the two, let me make sure, what else? So, yeah, if you could please read those, and then there's one that will go out to the community as well. So if you'll look at both of those, please, and then, once you have done that, then we'll be able to get those out. And then, let's see. And it looks like we're about to close, and I have Mr. Pre-Bruno, but I don't know where she stepped out to for her comments. So she has no comments, she missed on that. So the next scheduled meeting of the board will be on Monday, February 7. There will be a board workshop at 1:00 P.M., and we will be adjourning this meeting, and then we'll be back for another, we'll be back for another closed session meeting. And the, Ms. Thomas, the time for that, for the?
2:30.
2:30, thank you. So we have till 2:30, and then we'll be back here for that.
Wait a minute, do we need to open the meeting here?
Yes. Everybody come back here, please, at 2:30, so we can open the meeting and then close it. And again, thank you all so much. Really appreciate you. Cannot do it alone.